If you don't put it in the script, I have to remember it. All right, time being seven o'clock, I call the Hastings City Council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. And let the roll reflect, we do have two absentee council members tonight, so we will be pulling one thing from the agenda, and that was, under community development, a resolution for a variance, so that would be pulled and put on, hopefully, the November 6th meeting. It does require six of seven votes, and that's why it's being pulled. So with that, Kristi Barst is with us tonight with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and she's going to give us a little update and presentation on what she has been so busy doing along with her staff for the year. Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight. As Mayor Mary said, I am Kristi Barst. I'm president of the Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And in your packet tonight is a budget for our upcoming year that is specific to the Tourism Bureau, along with a draft of our marketing plan. So my hope tonight is to give you an overview of some of the tourism trends that we have seen particularly in the last year, and then stand to answer any questions on some of the material that has been put in your packet. This picture is at Rivertown Days, just for the record.
Looks wonderful.
Right? Thank you. Okay. So we'll do just a quick overview. I like to give an update on exactly how we're funded, and happy to answer any questions on this as well. But the Tourism Bureau is funded through a 3% lodging tax that is put on our area hotel rooms. So this is a 3% tax that goes on top of the room rental rate. Our Tourism Bureau receives 95% of that to run the Tourism Bureau. The funds can be used for marketing and promotional pieces only, and I only bring that up because oftentimes we get questions about tourism assets, like capital things, like sports facilities, or monuments, or something along those lines. It is pretty clear in the state statute that the tourism funds are only to be used for marketing and promotion. And then, as a separate way of funding, we look through for tourism grants through Explore Minnesota every year. So I'll go over a little bit of the trends that we've been seeing, and I went back to 2017 because I thought it would be helpful to show what was happening prior to the economic shutdown during COVID. And these dates are a little off, just to remind you, we work off of a fiscal year that starts October 1st and then ends September 30th. So, starting back in 2017, we were seeing a real uptick in tourism travel, and then once COVID-19 hit, the tourism industry took a huge plunge, as you can imagine, and we went down quite a bit, as you can see on that graph. But what I wanted to point out here is, just in this last year, we had a 7% increase in our lodging tax, which is the main way that we track tourism to our town, like, with numbers. And another thing to point out here is, prior to the economic shutdown in 2018 and 2019, to where we're at right now, we've seen a 27% increase in our lodging tax, which is pretty great to see. All right. A few other tracking metrics that we use, because we can't rely solely on our lodging tax revenue, being that that is lumped in with stays for construction workers that are working on road construction projects or economic development, so we don't rely solely on our lodging tax numbers. We do track the number of visitor guides and publication requests that we get, and we track that through our website. We also advertise with AAA, which provides us with leads every year. And then the DMO, those are destination marketing requests, so that's the requests we get from some of our huge tourism assets, like the Mall of America and our Highway Information Centers. So that graph to your right shows those three categories from last year compared to this year. And I wanted to point out one thing that was really interesting to us, which was our increase in what we're calling organic requests. So our website requests for the tourism guides went up significantly this year. Last year, I believe, we had just under 90, and this year, we've had over 600 requests through our website for our visitors' guides. We also tack through, or track through seasonal targeted online campaigns. So the three seasons that we focus on is spring, and we focus on spring because that's historically a low tourism time of the year, so we're trying to get an extra boost of marketing to our tourism-based businesses. We focus, we capitalize on fall, because that's our largest tourism season of the year, and then we also do some winter campaigns as well. So one thing that I wanted to point out this year that we noticed is, we've seen a, an increase in two specific trends. So we have our weekend trip visitors, which is a lot of younger families, and they're coming typically for the day. So they're more of our day trippers. And then we're seeing some more midweek traffic, and a huge increase in, like, recently retired couples and couples that are traveling with friends. And they want, and they want two different experiences. So for our most recent fall campaign, we did split those markets, and we focused on our recently retired market, so 60-plus. We had a specific income level in mind, and then we targeted the Rochester area, and just south of the Rochester area, in hopes that that would be just far enough away for them to come and stay overnight. And then for our weekend traveler, we really focused on the Twin Cities, to bring people down from the Twin Cities, especially during our apple season. This was the highest view rate that we have ever had on our online campaign. We had a 22% view rate for our midweek traveler and a 20% view rate for our weekend traveler. So that tells us that those targeted markets are really interested in this area. We saw a huge uptick in our Google Analytics when these campaigns went out, and then I put word of mouth in there, because we try and keep a pulse with our tourism-based businesses on if they're tracking where their customers are coming from. And it was really fun to hear, right after the midweek traveler email went out, a lot of our downtown businesses said that they saw visitors from Rochester, which is exactly where we were targeting. So that's always good to hear. Okay. So we had the opportunity to pilot a cool program this year. We started to notice an increase in bus tours interested in coming to our area, and these are volunteer-run organizations and a couple employee outings, but they reached out to us to say, hey, we want to spend the day here. Here are our visitors. This is what they're interested in. Can you help us plan an itinerary? So Dave Youngren, who is our tourism lead at the office, really took control of this pilot program. It was something that we said, you know what, we're not going to make this a revenue generator for us this year, let's just see how it goes. And what he did is, he worked with these bus tour groups, and he created itineraries, which included recommendations for lunch, and then different stays within the community, depending on what their interests were. And then at a certain point of their visit, he stepped on the bus, this is Dave, right there, stepping on the bus. He would step on the bus and provide historic tours. This was really well received. So most of our buses averaged 50 visitors, and they stayed an average of an hour longer than what we had planned. He got rave reviews for these. I think it's an opportunity for us. I really think that this is a market that went away during COVID-19, and we're starting to see an increase in it now. And I think if we can be ahead of that trend and help them plan these itineraries, this can become a two-, three-day type of excursion where we could partner with other communities. Okay. Just a quick update, we, in the last month, we have moved our office. We are now located down at the Confluence Hotel, and I'm just going to give a shout-out to my previous landlord, who's in the obvious right now, because it was a tough decision. We had a really great location on Highway 61, and Greg Jablonsky was an excellent landlord. But the Tourism and Chamber Board were interested in this new location because of its proximity to downtown Hastings. We felt that it was more of a visitor location, and it was a natural partnership with our new Confluence Hotel in town. So we are, just before you walk in, to the hotel and to the right, this is our office right here. Okay, so looking ahead, I apologize, I should say 2023, 2024, to our marketing plan, frankly, we're going to continue to build on what we've learned this past year. So we're really going to focus on the multi-generational and cultural heritage tourism. We did well with our seasonal online campaigns, and we're going to continue to push for those two market segments. What we're hoping to do is, we're hoping to expand outside of Minnesota. So we get a lot of interest from people within Minnesota, but we're starting to see an uptick in Iowa and Wisconsin, and as far as Colorado and Florida. So we're going to really start putting our money towards that Iowa market. We feel like that has the biggest potential. And then we're going to focus on Wisconsin, too. And this is based on just the information that we're getting from the requests that we get for visitors' guides, and then also from our local hotels, they're telling us where their guests are coming from. We're going to focus, again, on our print advertising, and this, because our budget is limited, we really are strategic to find print partners that can give us the best bang for our bunk. So AAA, as I mentioned, provides us actual leads, so when we are advertising with them, we get weekly leads where we can send visitors' guides. The bike and hike magazines that we choose to advertise in have the greatest reach. They also are good partners, because they're able to go to some of the tourism conferences that we frankly can't afford, and they provide the Hastings Visitors brochure at their table. And then the St. Croix Valley is a really good partner and publication, because it's the only publication that is showcased in Highway Information Centers in Minnesota and Wisconsin. So typically, when you're paying to advertise in a Highway Information Center, it's by state, and somehow this publication was able to get it across Minnesota and Wisconsin. So it's a good partnership, and it's a really nice spread for a good price. Also underneath print advertising, just a quick update, so we print the visitors' guides, and I should have brought some, but we print the visitors' guides, we print a specific map, our bike map, and then this year, we are going to be printing the street map in partnership with the Starkazette again. So we've had a ton of requests for street maps, so we're going to be partnering with them to bring that street map, and then hopefully, we'll be able to bring the community guide back as well. Okay, two of our big events, we still plan it on, Rivertown Days, and then our Hastings Prescott Bike Tour continues to grow, so that's another event that we're excited to partner with the Prescott Chamber on. Our goal is to really launch and organize and monetize these step-on tours, so that's going to be the big project for us this year. And then with the Confluence Hotel opening, we're kind of going to sit back and just evaluate the needs, and see where they're seeing a gap in some of our tourism marketing. All right. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Kristi. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kristi, beautiful job presenting all of this, for one. I love to see the new innovative ways of doing, like, the step-on tours to promote our local businesses. I think that's a great new place to start and grow, continue doing that, and then, you know, let us know what we can do on council to keep volunteering for Rivertown Days and all the new events, but I had a great time at Rivertown Days as well. You always do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. Hey, Kristi, question for you, on that 3% on the tax, hotel tax, what all, does that just hold, the hotels in town, or what's all included in that?
So it is the mainstream hotel, however, if a VRBO or Airbnb uses a specific platform, like Elevate, charges that lodging tax as well. And so I think there, I need to do a little bit more research on that, to be honest, Councilmember, because I do know that a few of our Airbnb and VRBOs are paying the lodging tax, but I can't, I'd-
But not necessarily all of them?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kind of curious, I know more of those are popping up around the area, which is awesome.
Right.
I just wasn't sure how that taxing works. I know I've stayed in many of them-
Yeah.
-in other places, and there's a lot of fees on it. So that money's going somewhere, I just wasn't sure how it came, if that affected the tourism.
Let me, actually, I'll follow up with city staff, too, because of the way that it shows on our lodging report, it just says Elevate, which is a platform. So it would be, it would be great if we could know the properties, because then we could help promote those properties, too.
Absolutely, right. Well, I appreciate your time in this, and, yeah, we've said it many times, sitting up here on the díaz, that when we go downtown, and everyone's always like, why you focus on the downtown? Well, the city owns the streets that go, you know, Second Street and all those, so it really makes sense, but, boy, it's great when we go down there and you don't know anyone, that's just the best part. Have to park over at the ramp, because the parking lots are full, and we just love it, and, yeah, it's really nice to be able to go downtown and grab a drink or a bite to eat, and look around and just go, wow, we're, you know, you don't know anyone, and I just love it, all these people coming to town, so-
Yeah.
You're doing a great job.
Well, thanks, it's a community effort.
Of course.
But there is, there is a vibe. There's definitely a vibe. So it's always exciting for me, the nerd in me, to see the numbers attached to the vibe, so it is growing.
I just ate a Dove Chocolate that says your vibe attracts your tribe.
Well, there you go.
Literally, right there, so, yep, you're attracting a great tribe.
Thank you.
Keep it up, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Pembel.
Kristi, thanks for what you do, and, but I have a question. With the riverboats coming up and down more often, and the one company that's stopping in Red Wing and offloading for tours, is there any way we can tap into some of that on that one company? Because they're taking them to wherever out of Red Wing, would they come here and do a day trip to Hastings, but how do you coordinate that with the riverboat company?
Right.
I have just a thought.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. So we had an opportunity with Vikings Cruise Line to do a pilot in Hastings in July, and it went really well. I think the challenge was trying to find something that worked within their budget and was a benefit for our downtown businesses as well. We were, the downfall was, we were their last stop. So although guests really enjoyed themselves, I think they enjoyed themselves just outside and listening to music, as opposed to shopping and eating in the restaurants, that doesn't mean that that opportunity isn't still there, and we want to build on it. That is something that we were working with the Confluence Hotel team on, and so I think once things get settled, that will be rekindled. So, no, it's a really big opportunity, thank you for bringing it up.
Yep, keep working at it, I think there's a possibility there.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
That was a great day.
It was a great day.
I was downtown, and I was working, and it was wonderful just to hear the good comments from everybody, but I will add to Kristi's, it was their last stop. They were kind of tired, they'd been away for 14 days, and they just kind of wanted to sit and rest, and we had activities for them, and some took in them, took them, took in on them, and, you know, she's working, and I think everyone else is trying to work to get those back in also, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. I do have a question. QR codes are so big now, Kristi. I know we have them on our big bellies downtown. Is the Chamber using them as well for, like, tourism, and where, and can you, can you take that data, I mean, can you get that data?
Mm-hmm. So we have them on the permanent kiosks, so the permanent kiosks that we created in partnership with the city, that focuses on shopping, dining, golf, activities like that, I should have those numbers with me, and I don't, but I will follow up.
It's okay.
I can follow up on those. So that's, that's the only place that we're utilizing them right now, but it's certainly an opportunity to grow.
Great, thank you. Well, once again, I mean, we're always excited to hear the update, because we know you stay busy over there, and we appreciate it, and our partnerships work well together, I think, and we want to continue that. Again, I always try to stress, how can we emphasize that to go west and south as well? And I know we're working on it. Our emphasis is our downtown because of, you know, the commerce that is all in two areas right there, but, you know, how can we spread our wings and get, you know, our visitors to go out to the west and go to the south, so.
Yeah, and I will, I think on that comment, if it's okay, Mayor, the emails and the targeted online campaigns link to itinerary page on our website, and that has a mix of tourism activities throughout town. So we highlight our golf courses, we highlight Alexis Bailey, we highlight live music on Wednesday at Dugarel's, you know, so those, so, although some of the most beautiful photos come from our historic downtown, the itineraries are really a mix of all over the community.
Yeah, and Dave does a great chat with photography, and, yeah, it's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. See you around town, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the, let's see, workshop and October 1st meeting? Okay. Comments from the audience? At this time, I will hear comments from the audience. If you'd wish to speak to the council, you could step to the podium, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Wagner, and I live on South Oaks Drive, 734, and I have concerns regarding the building that is planned to take place within the space behind our house and in that area. I know that we've been at previous meetings and have brought up our concerns, and you've probably been able to maybe take a chance to read those yourself, but I think it's helpful to see somebody in the flesh who might be experiencing those things, as well as to hear it from a voice. So one of the concerns that's pretty obvious is just the sheer number of houses that's being proposed to be back there. As it's mentioned, it's grown in numbers, but this plot has not grown in size. So something to really consider there is, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that space, or the plot visual for that, it does, it did get approved through the planning committee based off of minimum requirements, and I think it's important to understand the word "minimum" in this context as well. Also, the sheer number of houses back there brings that number of drivers up, as well as because the green space is going to be limited. Kids are going to be playing in the streets, because they don't have a yard to play in. So the safety of kids in general, we already know that there's not going to be sidewalks there, and therefore, the streets are the option. And that includes not only with, like I said, the number of traffic involved with that, but also to the snow removal, the garbage pickup, and busing that will be going through that space as well. I also want to address quality over quantity. I don't know if any of you reside in a home that was built by Greg J. Holmes, but I would like to kind of list off some things that we've experienced while living in our home. Upon moving in, we had an inspection in which they found that the duct work was not complete, as well as electrical lines needed to be replaced or moved differently, because they did not need to code at that time, as well as electrical shorts, an outlet that has been burned, bugs in which we've done research on and had exterminators come out that weren't able to be treated with extermination due to the fact of how they reside, in which the U of M conducted studies that we found aligned with this specific bug that stated that they grow in homes that are new homes based on waterlogged wood that had been sealed up prior to drying out. So we had these foreign green beetles, is what they're called, and those were the ones that we had to, we have to treat, but they can't be treated, like I said, through an exterminator, because of how they grow and how they reproduce. In addition to that, when we built our deck, siding is removed in order to place the plate. On there, there was wood that had been waterlogged and starting to mold, and I know, Nick, you had come out to help us with replacing the taping job that needed to be done in order to complete that. So that was another thing that we found, as well as when we were doing landscape during COVID, because that's what you do during COVID, was update your home, we found debris from the house, and I'm not just talking about, like, nails or screws or things like that, up to two feet of siding was found, and up to four feet of metal stripping was also found. So just looking at quality over quantity, really considering all of the components, and I know that we're just one house that was built, but with that list, maybe we're a lemon house? I don't know. But it seems like there might be some other things involved with that. If you haven't, again, what I would like to drive home with you is, if you haven't had a chance to look at the space yourselves, drive by and just imagine what 35 homes in there would look like, because when I look out the back window, I can't imagine that number of homes being back there. So if you have a chance to go out and to see it for yourself, I think it would really make a difference in determining if this is a quality issue or if it's a quantity issue. And with that, I don't have anything else, but again, the number of houses seems unrealistic for the space, and really consider the safety of kids with the increased houses and the amount of traffic coming in and out of that space. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Renee, and I'm speaking on behalf of one of our neighbors, also residing on South Oaks Drive. He's not able to be here today due to a sickness, so I just want to address some concerns of the narrow roads, as well as the too many houses, quantity over quality is mentioned here, and the amount of houses that are built up there went up every time there was a plot reviewed, as well as the fact that there are no trails or parks being out or any sidewalks. And I know there is a fee being paid to the city, however, that was addressed here. Somebody from the, when they discussed it in the planning committee, there was something, I mentioned that normally, within a development like this, the city gets something like a park or some sidewalks or trails, and it looks like the city is getting nothing here, and that's a quote right there, just a bunch of houses in the area. In addition, they mentioned that they moved to Hastings for the trails and everything that feels like, and everything that is going to happen is, we are just shoving way too many houses and rushing to get this done. Also, this is stormwater issue, you know, taking away, putting too much in houses or streets out there, the narrow lot sizes, I mean, you should look at the thing, at the plot and see about the 5,000 square feet minimum, and how many houses are less than that minimum, because, for whatever reason, but that's a fact. And also, street parking and storm drains is an issue they mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time? Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom. Okay, thank you. Council, are there any items to be considered? Council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Leifeld? Councilmember Pembel? Okay, any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Tonight, under Parks and Rec, we have an approval for a budget adjustment for the Lake Isabel Park contamination evacuation and backfill, and we have an update tonight and an introduction by our city administrator, Dan Mettechen. Welcome, Dan.
One second, please. Here we go. Hey, look at that. Thanks. We contracted with Minnesota Dirt Works, actually, last year in order to do a complete renovation of Lake Isabel Park. This is partly funded with Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant for $240,000. There's also a $25,000 donation from the neighboring homeowners association, they wanted to contribute to this neighborhood asset. Overall, the project, the balance being city funds, overall, the project is currently just over $660,000. That includes some expenses that the city would be, the Parks and Rec crew would be performing in order to save some dollars, but still adds up. But the problem we ran into most recently this summer was some contaminated materials, and really, it's a matter of there was some bad fill, so low spot, maybe a ravine, and it appears that sometime in the past, a building was likely buried there in order to get rid of it. So we found asbestos-containing materials, as well as some- as well as some lead materials. Because it's a park facility and would be used by the public, one, we have to clean it up, but we also have to clean it up within standards that are set by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And their requirement is that we have four feet of separation between the materials and the usable spaces. So, essentially, dig down four feet, removing the bad fill, truck that off as hazardous waste, and then bring in clean fill to fill it back. And you can see here, essentially, the area, this is on top of the existing park layout, but you can see here the extent of the contaminated materials that would need to be removed, sort of the, if there's an arrow here. The square area here is the current playground area. This rectangular area is the current basketball courts, and you can see, coming through the center here, is the current trail through there. The new layout, essentially, that trail would go straight north through there. The playground is roughly the same, new playground in roughly the same area, and the new picnic shelter roughly where the basketball courts are currently. So, it's a key area. The other piece that's notable to it is because of the elevation change in the park and the trail through there, accessibility requirements, we talked about, could we dig down two feet and bring in four feet and just sort of mound it up, and that doesn't work if we're trying to have an accessible trail getting from a high section of the park to a low section of the park. So, we're looking at $350,000 cost to remove those materials, it's about 3,800 cubic yards, and bring in clean fill, adding on a 10% contingency because it's been needed all throughout this project. We had looked at a couple of grant opportunities. We've been successful at acquiring some county and met council grants in the past for site cleanup, but typically, they're geared towards economic development projects, you know, remove the contaminations from this site in order to prep it for art space to go up, or Panache Sidery Proposal a couple of years ago, not an existing park. We could apply, but if we did, we're not doing any more work this fall. We're waiting till spring on something that, quite frankly, is unlikely. There are also some question in terms of, would we need to do some additional environmental study to even be eligible for one of those grants? Staff's recommendation is get this back on course, let's just suck it up and have to have the budget amendment, realize this is an expensive project for the park, and the contract would be able to get in this fall, instead of waiting till spring, get in this fall, complete all the site remediation, removing the, excavating out the contaminated soils, bringing in clean fill, level it off, and then in the spring, be able to come in and put in playgrounds and trails and the other amenities and get this done, I believe, by June next year. So, the recommendation really is a $385,000 budget amendment that would come from the city's park dedication fees, means they go to this park instead of some other park in town, but certainly an eligible use for it, and tough when you're already in the middle of a project to have this kind of added cost to it. But, $385,000, that includes a 10% contingency on top of the quote we have for the soil removals. With that, I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thanks, Your Honor. Dan, common borough import, $23.50 cubic yard, is that just a clean fill for underneath the topsoil?
Yeah, and, and most of that's trucking.
Most of that's what, I'm sorry?
The truck to haul it in, it's not the material itself.
Super random. I know our staff is really smart, but did we look into the Mississippi sand sitting across the river there that they're dredging out and giving away?
I cannot speak to that specific. I don't know if some being given away, but I do know, I do know that, that this came up at the park committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I believe that Chris looked into it. I just, I can't.
Yeah, I would, I would just want to make sure that somebody's been in contact with them as far as what is over there. I mean, I don't know what 3,819 cubic yards looks like, but I'm sure it's a lot. I mean, I know what it took to get four cubic yards into my backyard, so I can imagine. But, that might, I mean, always looking for ways to
Sure.
save a buck, and nothing better than saying you've got that Mississippi sand in your, in your project. So, worth checking into.
We can certainly check and confirm.
Awesome. Thanks, Dan.
You, Councilmember Leifeld. Any other discussion, council? Okay, with that, I'd have a motion to approve the 2023 budget amendment for Lake Isabel contamination and evacuation and backfill. Councilmember Pembel?
So moved.
Councilmember Lawrence? Newer discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Thanks, Dan. South Oaks of Hastings Fourth Edition, tonight, we will hear an introduction by Community Development Director, John Hensman. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, I'm just going to put this presentation up here in just a moment. All right, Mayor and council, we have before us tonight, South Oaks of Hastings Fourth Edition, and I understand that for many of you, you've seen this subdivision in various forms over the years. We're pleased to have something come forward tonight that we believe is the finality of it, which is a subdivision of the property into 35 single-family lots. Within your request tonight, there are four separate actions that we're asking for tonight. One of them is a resolution to vacate the existing easement. I'm going to put that up here for a second. Previous phase of South Oaks Edition, we established easements within the red area. Those easements need to be erased so that we could put new easements on the property. Does not affect any, any existing utilities that are there, nor does it affect anyone adjacent to the property. We did hold a public hearing on this on September 18th and did not have any comment on that. Then, we have the preliminary and final plat approval. That is the subdivision of the property here into 35 single-family lots, the roads and the outlets that you see before us here. And I'll go through a little bit of that review as we move forward through the presentation. Along with that, we have a couple of agreements that we do upon the approval of a plat. One of them is the development agreement, which memorializes the condition of the plat approval and the standards for site development, so engineering best standards, payments of fees, those types of things. And then the other one is the stormwater management agreement. There will be a stormwater management pond on the property located in the northeast corner on Outlet A. The stormwater management agreement establishes the construction and maintenance obligations for that pond, and I'll get into that in a little moment. I do want to point out that there was a change to the amendment, to the report that was sent out this morning. Staff did learn on Friday that there would be a comprehensive plan amendment necessary to our land use map to accommodate this subdivision. Right now, on our comprehensive plan map, we have this designated for what's termed medium density, which has a density range of eight units or more per acre. A previous version of that plan that I was referencing showed a lower density on it. This one's on me, folks. I apologize for having this late addition to it. Ultimately, what we're going to need to do is to bring forward a comprehensive plan amendment. This will involve review by the planning commission on November 13th, and then review by the council on November 20th. What we are doing tonight is, I'm recommending moving forward on the actions as presented. The only change on that would be the condition of preliminary and final plat approval condition on this comprehensive plan amendment. The comprehensive plan amendment does nothing to affect what is being proposed tonight for the subdivision itself. It changes the land use map to match the density that this project will be. So, just bring that forward for your information. Looking at the project itself, there's been some, quite some history on this, as you guys may know. We've been looking at this subdivision now for over 20 years in various forms. The original portion of South Oaks came forward in about 2001 as what's termed a planned residential development. It was a combination between single-family and townhome-type development. There were some trade-offs made at that time for having more density in one area, less density in another area, led to some public amenities such as the trail along between Bulkin Drive and the Vermillion River, which was constructed in an earlier part of the space. This portion here that's being proposed to South Oaks Fourth Edition has been, been the subject of a couple of different applications over the years. Originally, when we looked at this property, this was going to be townhomes. It was going to be 47 townhomes altogether. The street layout and the lot layout for that was for that 47. What we're seeing today is 35 single-family homes. One of the things that we did at that time as well is, when we set up the street network for the townhomes, it's pretty similar to what we have here for the street network today. There was a decision made by previous council to allow for a 50-foot right-of-way and 28-foot road section within this. This is a little bit smaller than a typical road section. The rationale was that this would work better within the subdivision here, and that there's not any real-through streets. If you look at the, at the boundaries of this plat here, it's really the last section of development. Roads within the subdivision will connect to other roads and do not connect to any other subdivision. So, essentially, the traffic that's coming within this subdivision is really localized and focused upon the people that will be moving in there. One of the changes that we do have over previous additions of this plat is stormwater ponding on-site. Outlet D, which is located in the northeast corner, will be an outlot for stormwater ponding. Developer has agreed to dedicate that outlot to the city. The city would contract out the maintenance to the individual owners within the subdivision. The individual owners will be responsible for those maintenance obligations that would be billed back to them. So, that is the agreement that we've come upon here, seems workable, and we're moving forward with that. One of the things that's a little bit unusual about this subdivision here is in that Outlet D, it exceeds our normal depth to maintain vegetation. So, we did put a longer period of time, a three-year period, on the, on the warranty for landscaping of the, to make sure that everything takes, because it's a little bit unusual on that standpoint. Planning Commission did review this on a couple of different occasions under the subdivision, looked at it on September 25th, did recommend approval of it per the conditions within your staff report. We had a couple of residents that came forward at that meeting, had some concerns about lot sizes, density of homes, number of lots, safety of kids on street, tree preservation, and park dedication. So, do note that, the specific comments in that are within the record within your report as well. There was also a continuation of this at the August 28th meeting where there was also comment taken at that time. So, looking at the subdivision itself, just to highlight a couple of items, these would-be single-family, Zoned R3, which is similar to the other properties surrounding it, it is under a planned residential development. The planned residential development scenario allows us to provide some flexibility on the sizes of lots, provided that a density established is maintained throughout the development. So, what you'll see here is properties that vary in size from anything from 4,500 to 7,100 square feet. The average size is about 5,300 square feet. Within the R3 district, we do have a minimum 5,000 square foot lot size under traditional developments, but because of the planned residential development scenario, we can allow for these types of flexibilities within it. This will be paying into our park dedication fund. The Park and Recreation Commission looked at this a few years ago, did recommend the payment of cash in lieu of land, citing the location of parks within the area. So, those will be repaid into the plan itself. And we've spent some, had some extensive review of the stormwater plan. Our engineer has signed off on that, so we're happy to bring that forward. So, before you tonight, we do have the four actions for you, for the items pertaining to South Oaks Fourth Edition. Those can be taken individually, they can be taken all at one if you so choose to do so. The developer, Greg Jablonsky, is available tonight, too, if you have any questions for him, and I could take any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council on Discussion, Councilmember Leifeld?
Thanks, Your Honor. John, so you made a comment a bit ago about the through streets. So, there's an entrance from 31st and an entrance from South Oaks, and then further on South Oaks, that little bloop, bloop over on the right, there won't be anything coming out there?
Councilmember, you can kind of see the outline here. So, there will be, street will go down here to connect into these stubs, and another street will come here to South Oaks. So, two entrances from South Oaks, one from 31st.
So, it'll kind of horseshoe.
Yeah, kind of a wishbone in there, yeah.
Wishbone, okay. All right, and then looking around, it looks as though the houses to the east, that's townhomes of some sort?
Correct.
That has sidewalks, but it looks like the houses to the direct north, the south, and the west, those neighborhoods don't have sidewalks.
Yeah, Councilmember, I'm looking at the aerial photo here for sidewalks. At, on 31st Street, there's a sidewalk here going
On the other.
On 31st. It's a collector road. So, our sidewalk policy states that on collector roads, we'll put a sidewalk and/or trail, or if there's a connection to a school or a park. So, those are what we use to make determinations for sidewalks here. So, we do have the sidewalk on 31st, we do have a trail further up that this connects to here. There's not one on Century or South Oaks, and I don't believe there's one on Century, I said Olson, Olson and Century, excuse me. So, just the one on 31st.
So, Planning Commission, when they met, did they have any comments about parking within the neighborhood? Based, I've read, reading through about the lot sizes, less space between driveways.
Whoops, let me go back to here.
What was the recommendation regarding that?
Yeah, recommendation by Planning Commission is, was to move forward with the design as shown here. There was some comment pertaining to, when you have a smaller lot width, that you have less availability to park within the streets because your, your gaps between driveways are less on that. From a parking standpoint, our parking ordinance requires two parking spaces per unit. With all these units here, they'll have a two-stall garage that accounts for two of them, and then the driveway itself, which accounts for another. So, they're, they're providing at least four spaces per unit, which is twice what we require. If you've got situations for overflow, where, you know, people have multiple people over, that could put a strain within the street system there, but it's beyond what we can require in the subdivision code.
Thanks, John. Additional question to that, then? If the, if our information we have that states, a zoning district establishes a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and approximately half of these lots are less than that 5,000. So, what we're looking at here is a variance to allow for that smaller lot size. Is that what, what is one of the asks of us right now?
Councilmember, not an ask for a variance itself.
Okay.
We have something termed a planned residential development, which is, this development was zoned as, R3 PRD. What that allows is for the lot sizes and setbacks to vary, provided that they meet an average. The average that was established at that time was you needed to be at least, the average for the lots be at least the minimum lot size of the district, which is 5,000. So, that's where, when you take a look at the average, they're at about 5,300 square feet, so it does meet the terms of that planned residential development.
Okay. I'm going to keep going, I have questions.
Sure.
And then, another question, I saw measurements of, so am I seeing setbacks of 20 feet from curb, I'm guessing, to the front of the house?
20 feet from the right-of-way itself, so
From the right-of-way.
Right. So, you're going to have a little bit more, probably another 12 feet or so till you get to the curb on this.
Got it. Okay, and then side, seven feet, so we could be talking from your garage to the neighbor's kitchen or bedroom, seven feet?
There'd be seven feet from the property lines, you'd double that, so it'd be 14.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, John, appreciate your answering my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Any other council discussion? Okay. If you are comfortable, council, we would do all four motions at the same time. Once again, that is, one, a resolution of vacation certain easement location within the city. Two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hastings, granting preliminary and final plat approval of South Oaks. Three, development agreement for the plat of South Oaks of Hastings Fourth Edition by and between the city of Hastings and Greg J. Holmes, and Susan M. Jablonsky and Greg J. Holmes, Hastings. J. Holmes, Hastings, stormwater. And, did I hit them all? Yep, I did the stormwater. Development agreement for the plat of South Oak, right? All four? Any questions? Councilmember Leifeld.
You know what? I'm on a roll. So, and since the builder's here, do we have an idea, are we being told at all what the price point's going to be on these houses?
Yes.
Does Mr. Jablonsky have anything to share on that?
Yeah, base price will be $334.9 for a heritage plan. I did have an updated plan of it. We just actually received that, so I think I emailed one to John, Nick maybe, I don't know if there's any way to pass that on under phone or.
Yeah, is it a paper copy?
No.
It's on his phone.
Yeah.
And John has a follow-up to that, then?
I could, I'll email that over to council.
And then as a follow-up to that, these are full basements, not on slab?
Yeah, slab upgrade, but with a basement option. So our base price, these are very similar to what we built on South Oaks Drive, very similar to what we built on 31st Street. And so this is kind of a continuation. Another thing we've done is made some updates, if you would, to our elevations.
Okay.
And so I think they're much more attractive, because we've added some gauges and current styling, if you would, to the home.
Thanks, Greg.
I think that what this does is give 35 families the ability to buy a home in that what could be the lowest 300, that's going to be higher and higher, but for sure, under 350. And PNI payments, or whatever you might wonder, is around 1,500 PNI for these mortgages. So that's a very affordable alternative for folks that may be going on a roof or a car. Right now, I think it's a needed option, that we'll get 35 homes in this community, provide homes for families, schools, things like that. So I think it's very good. I will just add that there is an additional trail right to the west, too. I believe, John, behind Olson Drive.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, over here.
A lot of details, parts of planning and management, and I think it's a great system. So, and I do believe that the sidewalks and trails are where necessary, for people who will.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Pimble.
You know, listening to this discussion, and I'll say, John, you know, I like lots that have space, and it's, but I'm hearing from my kids that, you know, they want to buy homes that they can afford to buy. The times have changed, and it is difficult to find a house in what's called price point for young families. And my concern is, and I believe this development has to go through, but the point I want to say is, what's changing? What Hastings is changing is, you know, we want young families. It's good for the community, but it's also good for the school district. We need to have something in this kind of price point. Yes, if the, the size of the lot is smaller and there's, but pretty quick, we're going to be looking at homes that are, you know, in this $500,000 to $700,000, because the costs of everything is just going to keep going up. And if you could get 35 homes built that are solid, good homes, hopefully, that will bring in these folks from other parts of the community or away from Hastings, coming to Hastings, to want to live here and raise their families here. Yes, there are things that are difficult about this size and this development, but as we move forward, as, as a community, we need to think about those things to try and bring in something that's at a lower price point to entice these folks to come to our community and live here and grow here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimble. Councilmember Leifeld.
One side note to Greg's comment, a $350,000 home is never going to cost you $1,500 a month. I know you.
Not just principal and interest, but.
Yeah. I'm familiar, but for those, for those listening, and, hold up, those listening and all excited about, my God, I could afford a $1,500 house payment, I can assure you, a $350,000 home is not going to cost you $1,500 a month, even on your principal and interest. So, on that, if you want to speak, I'd ask that you go to the microphone.
So what Craig and I were talking about, and Craig is with AXIA, and we were talking about a $320,000 home with a, probably a substantial down payment, maybe 20,000 or 25,000. And it does seem like a lot of people today, young couples, seem to have that kind of down payment. When I grew up, it wasn't the case. Nobody had down payments. That was the year of contract for deeds, $1,000 down, move in and hope you make the payments. So that has changed. And I think one of the biggest things that's changed on this project is the scope of it when we went to detach single-family homes. This gives people a chance to get a payment that they can afford. It may not be 1,500, but we're trying to approach that. We can also do closing costs, we can do different things to make this affordable. I was faced with this, I had the ability to do 48 townhomes in this same land. I've looked at Lennar Projects, there was one in Ham Lake, and I've got pictures of it, and I'll try and send it to you guys. This was my choice. I think it will be a very nice neighborhood. It will be a little tighter than South Oaks, but much the same as South Oaks Drive. This is really nothing new. We're staying with the same. And I guess to differentiate between 48 townhomes and what that would look like, talk about closed driveways, nowhere for snow, this is just so much better. By going with single-family, the side yard setbacks aren't really any different than on South Oaks. The yards may be tighter. We had to do something to kind of treat, try and keep a little bit of an affordability factor to these homes. You know, with lots and what it costs to put in the infrastructure today, you just have to cut it somewhere to make it. It's way better than townhomes. If I did 48 towns and townhomes in here, it just doesn't look as nice. This will look nice.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick question for you, John, actually. I think Councilmember Leifeld asked and got answered most of mine, but with this being a little bit smaller development, with our smaller area for development, is snow removal going to be a little bit trickier this way? Is there any concerns about that? I know it was brought up on Planning Committee a couple times.
Sure. And Councilmember, for snow removal itself, these would be public roads, so we would be taking care of the snow removal. The roadway width would be a little bit smaller than our typical 32-foot section, so there'd be less snow to plow in there. The boulevard areas that we would have would be a little smaller, but when you take a look at the percentage on the street with not any real smaller there, I don't anticipate issues with snow storage within the development itself. We've, we've got adequate right-of-way within there for snow storage.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Well, I'm just excited, and I think council is too, to see this type of housing come for our community. I mean, we've been asking for it for a long time, and I agree with Greg. I mean, townhouses, I don't think would be saleable, that's saleable to young families. They want a home. They want a single-family house. So I'm support, I would love to support this development, and I'm sure that Greg is going to take into consideration the comments that he's heard tonight and at the planning meeting. So, counsel, there is a motion out there? I mean, there's, it's been stated, but we don't have a first or a second yet.
I'll motion before with it, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lawrence, first.
Just a clarification, Mayor, and Councilmember Lawrence, is this a motion for all four of the items or for one? Okay, thank you.
All four. And Councilmember Pimble is the second, new or additional discussion counsel. All those in favor of A, B, C, and D for South Oaks of Hastings Fourth Edition, all those in motion say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed to the motion state by saying nay. And that motion prevails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Greg, for answering your questions, answering the questions. Okay, counsel, under administration, we have a pre-authorized purchase of a ladder truck with McQueen equipment. Dan, could you give us a little information and a little update?
Thank you, Mayor. This is different than what we were talking about just a month ago when we were doing the preliminary 2024 budget, although we planned on saving towards a new ladder truck and recognize that there are years' lead time, that really we'd be saving for a future truck. A couple of things here. One, the price is better than what we had estimated. We had thought it'd be about 1.9 million, and we're looking at somewhere in the range of 1.6 to 1.7. The other piece to it is, although we had envisioned saving $900,000 towards it and over the next couple of years coming up with the remainder, staff's recommendation is dig deep, I'll explain that in a second, but purchase the entire thing upfront here now, which gets us about a $142,000 discount versus paying for it on, on delivery. Delivery is 31 to 34 months out, so we're looking at August of 2026. But it is something that we're anticipating needing, improvements to the fleet. We have an existing ladder truck that still has trade-in value, so to speak, that we would like to capitalize on rather than driving it till it's done. The replacement ladder truck is a little bit smaller and has the ability to function as an engine, so it's more functionally usable. It also being smaller and sort of less computer on it is more user-friendly, as well as significantly less on maintenance aspects to it. It seems there's always some censor going out on the complicated existing truck. Pricing we have is through the Houston-Galveston Consortium, so essentially, pre-qualified bid, so we know these are, prices are good. Recommend at minimum. Authorizing it now, because the cost goes up $17,000 at the end of the month. But the figures we're looking at, if we purchase it outright now, $1,580,000 and change. If we wanted to authorize it now, but wait two and a half years, three years for a delivery, the cost there would be $1,722,000 and change, so about $142,000 savings. Talking with the finance department, we would draw those additional sources from two locations or two, two areas of our reserves, one being the Budget Stabilization Fund, which is monies that we set aside for a future capital expense. So a couple of years ago, we were, or several years ago, we were anticipating needing to purchase a quarter million dollars of new radios for the police department, so we were saving money for a couple of years in anticipation of that. When we bought those, we didn't use the Budget Stabilization Fund, we used some other cash. So there's some money in that stabilization fund that can be utilized. The other piece is our Debt Redemption Fund, our Fund 500, which if we bonded for a project, a neighborhood project, a street project, for example, is what we typically would do. Let's say it's a, hypothetically, a $4 million bond issue, but project goes well, we don't need contingency funds. The excess monies that we bonded for, we put into this Debt Redemption Fund. It does have legal restrictions on how those monies can be used, so they can be used for something that, either buying down a future bond issue or toward something that might otherwise be borrowed for, such as a $1.6 million truck. So there's some funding there that's available to help make up that, that difference. So we were planning on 900,000. If we can come up with another $680,000 and buy it now, which staff believes we can and recommends that we do, it does save us 140-some thousand dollars going forward. With that, I can certainly take questions on behalf of the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. My Councilmember Pimble.
Yeah, Dan, when the old fire truck, the old ladder truck is how old? And give us some sense of how many times it's out of service because of computer glitches. It just got back in service, because I saw it was gone for two or three days.
It's, it's like. It has a lot of comput, it's just a complex piece of equipment, has a lot of sensors and computers on it. It's nice, but there's, I don't want to say always, but there's frequently something going out and needs to be fixed in order to safely maintain it in service. We've spent, to date, $23,000 on maintenance this year. I don't have a number of times that it's out, but it's often.
That's, that's my concern, is this reliability of something that's here to protect the community. And yes, we have a ladder truck, but if the ladder truck is only in service 70, 80% of the time, where are we at? And we need to replace that. But my second part of that question is, a newer version, a modified ladder truck, hopefully technology has improved, so we don't have so many computers and sensors to run something and make it work, and it's more sustainable, I guess is the right way to look at it and say, okay, we're spending X amount of dollars, but we want something that's going to be in service 99.9% of the time and not be sitting at somebody else's shop trying to be fixed. Because God only knows when you're going to need it, and you don't have one, and then we're looking for mutual aid to try and get somebody here with a ladder truck, that could be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimble. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to pre-approve the purchase of the ladder truck and authorize signature of contract with McQueen Emergency. That's it.
Seconded.
Thank you. And a second by Councilmember House. Any new discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, Dan. Tonight, also, Dan will give us a little introduction for the national class action settlement for the PFAS.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is just informational. No action is requested this evening, but do expect to have a recommendation at a November meeting, but felt this is important enough to at least introduce it earlier for you. Recently, there has been a multi-district litigation against 3M and DuPont regarding PFAS. It is being, or has been overseen by the U.S. District Court in South Carolina. These national settlements are roughly 10 and a half to 12 and a half billion with a B on 3M's case, and about 1.2 billion in DuPont's case. Those amounts would be reduced by legal costs, administrative fees, et cetera, which have not been determined at this point. My understanding is the settlements would also be paid over a nine-year period. Hastings, having a public water supply with PFAS is eligible to participate in the settlement. Using their calculator, the estimate is we would receive 1.5 million dollars, which, although we were talking large numbers, when you spread it across. we were talking large numbers, when you spread it across the entire country, 1.5 million for Hastings is far less than the estimated $69 million construction we're looking at, plus the operation and maintenance of 800,000 to $1 million per year. Do have the option at remaining in the class action, but I expect that my recommendation next month would be that we opt out. We do need to, if so desired, we would need to affirmatively opt out. Otherwise, you're automatically rolled into it, and the deadlines are in early December. So we've got a couple of meetings in between there. If people have some questions or something they want researched or answered, did talk with our environmental attorney on this, but if there were other questions people had, we can certainly consider those before acting on it in the next month. Any thoughts or questions tonight? Otherwise, it really is just for your information at this point.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions tonight, council? Okay, then we will move on to a resolution for a write-in votes for the local election. In this item, we have an introduction from our Assistant City Administrator, Kelly Murtaugh. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, as you know, our state legislature was very busy this past year, and they passed new legislation in a number of different areas, including elections, of course. So what's before you this evening is a decision on how we'll handle write-ins for local elections. Currently, we are required to tally all write-ins for local elections for office. This is inefficient and probably unnecessary practice, and we, I looked back at the last general election, we had approximately 400 write-in votes. And some of them may not have represented a resident in the city. So, they were a variety of write-in votes. So one of the challenges to the tally process for write-in votes, that we've been required to tally write-ins even if the oval was not filled in on a ballot. So I wanted to show you that in the instructions, folks are required to fill in the oval, but we were instructed in tallying things that even if they didn't fill in the oval but wrote in a write-in candidate name, we still had to tally it. So, we have a, we have the tabulators that can read the ballots and do the tallying for us, but we still had to hand-go through each of them just to see if there was a write-in candidate, just in case. And so, the neat, one of the neat moves that they made this year was that we don't have to count them if they don't fill in the oval. So that was a big win right there, no matter what the ballot looks like. So that leads to the next piece, which are our options. And so there are two options before you for cities to tally the write-in votes. And so there, the first option is to require candidates who might be write-in candidates to file a written request no later than the seventh day before the election. And that, so if someone did that, then we would have to go through and check to see if they got any votes, because we would have to tally them if they indicated that they were interested in having us do that. So that's one option. The other option is to require that they are only individually recorded if the total number of write-in votes for that office is equal to or greater than the fewest number of non-write-in votes for a ballot candidate, which is a mouthful, of course. But essentially what that means is if the total number of write-in votes is less than all the other candidates, we don't have to touch it. We just know the number, but we don't have to tally any individual pieces. This is the option that staff are recommending that we go with. Again, our, we had just under 400 write-in votes for the last election, in many thousands of voters who come in and do the voting. So that's what we're recommending. It's a relatively simple thing, but we do, we are required to do a resolution to make a choice. Otherwise, we are still doing it the same way we've been doing it for the last number of decades. So I can take any questions that you might have at this point.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions, council? Councilmember House.
Thank you, Kelly. Seems like a much more effective system to do the total number of write-in votes for office is equal or greater than. It makes tons of sense. I'd like to move that motion forward.
Okay. I would second that. Thank you, Councilmember House. And Councilmember Leifeld seconds. Any other discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Any announcements, council? I have a couple. The Hastings Community Halloween Party is Friday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school, recommended for families, kids under 12 and under. It's a free event. Plus, please bring a non-perishable food item for the Hastings Family Service or a cash or check donation for the Youth Impact Council for their scholarships. Organics, recycling, and composing, composting has been, become increasingly trendy topics in the past years. And what really, what are they really? Learn more about how composting works, how it benefits the community, and how you can easily do your part in that crash course. It is on Tuesday, October 24th, here at City Hall in the community room from 7:00 to 8:00. I'd like to recognize the coming up, October 28th, is National First Responders Day. And thank all of our first responders and their service from, for our community. Meetings Tuesday, October 17th, the Heritage Preservation Commission has been canceled. Wednesday, October 18th, 6:00 p.m., Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Monday, October 23rd, the Planning Committee of Council has been canceled. Planning Commission meeting is at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 25th, is a 7:00 p.m. Public Safety Committee meeting. And Monday, November 6th, is a 7:00 p.m. council meeting. I would accept a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Pembel? And Councilmember Lawrence says a second. No discussion? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. We are adjourned.